Welcome. Welcome to our town council meeting for our beautiful town of Poetry, Texas on this Tuesday night, May 16th, 2023. We welcome you and want you to feel heard, valued, informed, and connected to your town and its council. We welcome diversity of opinion and want minority views as well as majority views to be heard. We also appreciate mutual respect despite opposing view. Your opinions, suggestions, and comments in favor of or against a topic are welcome. At this time, I need to remind the public that a disruption of this meeting may be considered a criminal offense according to Texas Penal Code 3813 and 4205. You must be signed up to speak during the meeting and stay on topic according to state law. To preserve the order and decorum of the meeting, any person who makes profane, slanderous, threatening remarks or becomes disruptive during the meeting will be asked to leave or may be escorted out by a peace officer and given a citation. At this time, we have, Jana Shelton had a medical emergency for her husband, and he's reportedly doing okay. They're running some tests. But in her place, we have Evy Anderson, so she's gonna do real call for us. Thank you, Evy.
Councilman Tom Anderson.
Here.
Councilman Mike Jaffe.
Here.
Councilman Terry Fowler.
Here.
Councilman Simeon White.
Here.
And Councilman Brian Vincent.
Here.
And Mayor Tara Sinkovick.
Here. Thank you. Incoram is confirmed. At this time, Councilmember White will lead us in the pledge and the invocation. Please rise.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Lord, we pray to you today. A prayer of thanksgiving for the last two years we've had together as a council and as citizens, just working together as neighbors. We know that your will has been done through it all and that you've accomplished much through the people in this room and through the generous donations. And I pray that you'd continue to bless us and bless all the individuals that have helped create what we have in the same way that they've blessed their neighbors and blessed this town. I pray you'd continue to bring us closer to the goal that you see for us, Lord, and that we would just continue to walk out your will for this town and for our neighbors. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Simeon. Okay, so under items of community interest, we, the town is soliciting for any grant writers available, and please email us at contact@poetrytexas.org. We have one who is working on things, but it doesn't, it wouldn't definitely be beneficial to have another one or two on that. If you live in Kaufman County, we want to hear from our citizens. Anyone who believes they were adversely affected by the property ID split out in Kaufman County, please email with factual information regarding such to mayor.tara@poetrytexas.org. To solve any of the problems, we need factual information about any hardships which this may have caused. Coy Johnson, the deputy appraiser of Kaufman County, has said it does not affect your property values as they group them together in what is called an economic unit when evaluating values. He says it doesn't affect one's homestead or agricultural exemptions. Thirdly, the town welcomes a newly approved solid waste vendor called Texas Contractor Rolloffs, which can be reached at k-pots@texascontractorrolloffs.com or 469-576-5162. They only service the large 15, 20, or 25-yard dumpsters. A big thanks to Sheri and Brian Vincent, who donated $500 for the now-installed aerobic sub to tank at the Town Hall site. Thanks to Dale Bryant, who donated three concrete boards and three metal handrails to be used in the ADA bathroom. Thanks to an anonymous donor who purchased a name-brand faucet for the town bathroom sink as recommended by a certified plumber. Thanks to Butch and Charlotte Lambert, who donated $100 for the installation of tile in the bathroom. All donations help us keep our costs down. Thanks to Councilmember Tom Anderson for installing the new bulletin board on the Town Hall site. All town notices will be available on this board from now on. Note that the Texas Local Government Code requires a bulletin board or an electronic bulletin board and that it be available to the public. Local Government Code, Section 551043 and Section 551050. Therefore, this board was installed right at the fence for easy access and continuous availability. Right now, we have reports. We have the April end 2023 report. Our beginning balance was $42,051.32. Our ending balance is $31,580.39.
That's different than what we have.
Yep.
Oh, excuse me. Somehow, we, with, that's an older one. Thank you for that. I'm reading from the older version. We had, with Ms. Jana out, I had to do a lot more copying than I anticipated. All right, so, excuse me, beginning balance at $44,105.77. And we had total deposits of $99,177.17, withdrawals of $1,269.25, checks paid, a total of $29,60.95. Our ending balance is $49,052.74. Okay, right now, since Secretary Jana is out, we're going to have Evy Anderson read her secretary's report.
Town secretary's office report on current items we've been working on from the time of the last report on 4/27/23. Note, these items include work done by Mayor Sinkovick, Teresa Solander, Deputy Town Secretary, and Jana Shelton, Town Secretary. Septic installation was performed and inspected on Friday, May 5. Mayor Protem Anderson and Mayor Sinkovick were present at various times throughout the day. Discussed with Coy Johnson regarding what the split out of properties may mean for landowners. He reported that the split out does not affect property values or agriculture and homestead exemptions. We received a franchise agreement from Texas Contractor Rolloffs with an annual fee paid, swearing-in ceremony planned and promoted. We have received a right-of-way permit from Farmers Electric Co-op. An email received from citizen Barbara Hendricks to request the mayor and council consider an ordinance on noise control. Ms. Hendricks reports construction is going, is ongoing after normal business hours. We received one application for the Town of Poetry's first annual scholarship promoting agriculture. The May newsletter was composed, completed, and published. We received an invitation for a lunch and learn with Quinlan ISD on May 2, 2023. The council was invited. Two public information requests were received and processed. Posted daily totals online received from Hunt County Elections, Division from Early Voting. Viewed the video from the last council meeting and processed the minutes for April 27, 2023, corrected previous minutes. Research in creation of resolution for canvassing the election resolution. Composed the agenda and created the council packet for the May 16, 2023, regular council meeting, and posted in required places. Mayor Protem Tom Anderson and Mayor Sinkovick attended an appreciation luncheon for all emergency responders that was held on May 4 at the Quinlan ISD Administration Building. And that is from Jana.
Thank you, Evy. Okay, the third report we have is from Councilmember White. I've asked him to report about Resolution 2066. I haven't seen his report, but I trust it will be thorough and good.
Well, I was under the impression that I was gonna give a rundown slash paraphrase of Mr. Berman's thoughts, right? Because we legally can't go over or read out what he has or pass it out because it's under
Right.
confidential information. But just a paraphrasing of what he had is what you were expecting, right?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. I just wanted to clarify. These aren't so much my thoughts as a prayer phrase of that. And I'm not gonna quote anything here, but I'm gonna give you a rundown. Terrell passed a resolution which, in the end, isn't gonna have much of an effect on poetry in pretty much any way, shape, or form. It doesn't affect us because it was just a resolution to say they would stop their annexation plans that they had previously determined after House Bill 347 was taken into effect, which pretty much prevented cities from continuing to grow and annex. However, cities that already had plans in place before that House Bill went into effect could continue them, and it was called grandfathered in. And after, and besides that grandfathering, they couldn't do anything. Part of that grandfathering included poetry, and Terrell confirmed its plans in Resolution 927 and 928 that it had planned to do that to poetry. However, however, Terrell couldn't take poetry because of the incorporation, because no city can grow and take over land from a previous one. Now, so far, this is pretty much all we've known. I mean, we've known this already, and Mr., well, here's the paraphrase continued, is that future laws would give, if there was ever a law change, if that House bill was ever changed or modified, then Terrell could continue its expansion despite having revoked this latest resolution they made. And this is part of the reason that it doesn't really affect us too much because, A, we couldn't be taken over because we are incorporated, and B, if we ever became disincorporated, that law could always change. Terrell could come back in anyways. It's also mentioned that that's not the only way for Terrell to end up taking over poetry if poetry was no longer incorporated. The other way would be if Terrell pretty much jay-remanders where they're gonna annex, which is just choosing where they're gonna annex and trying to acquire votes from the citizens, because people can still voluntarily annex. So people would still have that option to give up their land to Terrell, which is a possibility. Those two possibilities, one being change in law, the second being voluntary annexation, are prevented by poetry being incorporated and remaining incorporated. And besides that, poetry also protects its citizens from other cities encroaching besides Terrell and also from special districts. And that's pretty much the summation of Mr. Berman's report there.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Okay, on the consent agenda, we have amended minutes from the regular meeting of March 21, 2023. So I believe Councilmember Jaffe worked on that. Thank you, Mike. So, is there a motion to accept those?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Jaffe, seconded by Councilmember Anderson. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay. Secondly, we have on the consent agenda, the minutes from the special meeting, April 27, 2023. And that meeting had been a regular meeting, but we moved the date, and so it's okay to call the special meeting. I did confirm that with David Berman. So if, is there any comment on that from council?
Well, I had a comment on item five, which it says, discuss and take action on C.N. Vincent's ordinance preventing ad valorem tax in poetry. And then the paragraph below says the same thing, preventing ad valorem tax.
Point of order, this is consent agenda. Do we need to move this to a regular agenda item?
So we do. Why don't we go ahead? If we're gonna discuss about it, let's go ahead, and you got a motion to move it to the regular agenda.
Sure. Make a motion. We move it to the regular agenda.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion to move that, so we can discuss it on the regular agenda. We'll call that item A. And seconded by Vincent. All those in favor? All right. And that passes. Okay, moving on to the regular agenda. Item A, minutes from the special meeting, April 27, 2023. Go ahead, Tom.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, item five, where it says, discuss, take action on C.N. Vincent's ordinance preventing ad valorem tax. I was under the impression these were procedures for ad valorem tax, that it didn't prevent it. It just offered procedures. And in the paragraph below, it also says preventing. And my understanding was it just offered procedures, not preventing.
Well, it makes it much more difficult.
Well, that's not the same.
No, it's not.
I agree with that edit, because we, we can't legally say we have a zero percent, so we can't prevent ad valorem taxes. We can just procedurally attempt to block it. So I definitely agree with that edit.
Okay, so what wording would you prefer?
I would say the word preventing to replace with procedures for, both in the title and in the first paragraph. Just both the same thing, preventing, change to procedures for.
I think on the current agenda, we have it worded a little bit differently, and I kind of like that. It says restricting, establishing. So it kind of restricts that. I think if you say it's procedures for, that could lend itself to say, you know, for someone to interpret that, that we're actually trying to do a positive spin on it. Instead of saying restricting, it's more, it's more restrictive against establishing an ad valorem tax, don't you think?
I'm sorry, what are you saying the word should be?
Well, on the current agenda for item, we have it worded, discuss and take action on ordinance restricting, restricting. So it's not preventing, but it does provide some sort of restriction on. It's not promoting the ad valorem tax. It is more of trying to put a restriction on it.
Um.
But, I mean, whatever you guys, however you want to word it.
I mean, if we're talking strict technicality, I'd say it's restriction on the implementation of ad valorem tax, because it isn't a restriction once it's implemented so much as implementing it.
Right. And the word that's worded here, restriction on establishing, but implementation, I think that would be a more precise and accurate way to word that. I think I agree with you on that.
So that's fine. So it's restricting, yeah.
On the implementation. Yeah. Okay. Does everyone agree with that? Okay. Is there anything else that you noticed? So it's on number five, and then where else was it worded that way?
The next paragraph. It would be twice on item five.
On item five, okay. Okay. Okay, is there anything else? Guess we can have Jana, we can approve it with those amendments if you'd like.
I make a motion. We approve it with the, the items we just discussed for item five, replacing preventing with restricting implementation.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so we have, and we have a motion by Anderson, seconded by Jaffe, for approving the minutes as written, except for replacing item five in the subsequent paragraph with the words, striking the current words and using restricting the implementation instead. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay. Okay, on the regular agenda, we have item one.
Okay, we have, discuss and take action on the voluntary annexation agreement with addendum for Lori and Andy Bass authorizing commencement of annexation proceedings for the property located at 16750 CR 248. So Attorney Berman gave us the addendum, and he wanted to make sure that they understood exactly what this meant. And then they, I did reach out to them several times. They did finally submit a legal description. It's not the full warranty deed, but it, Attorney Berman did say it will suffice, so we have what we need from them. They have, they have signed the initial agreement, and then I will get with them, and we can add, put all this together with them if, if the council approves that.
Now, one of my concerns last time was that they specifically were doing this so that their property line would be redrawn, and we don't have control over that. Are they aware of that at that, at this point?
I did reach out to the appraisal district, and he said that absolutely they can. Once, once this is done, then they, they can do that. Yep. So, and I did convey that to them as well. Okay, we have Glenn Strauss. Did you want to speak on this? Okay. Any other comments from council on this? Okay, is there a motion to accept this? Now, again, this is the first step, in my understanding, and then we have to bring it to a public forum to finalize some of this. So, but the first step is to give this to the Basses, have them sign off. And then there's another step to it, is what Attorney Berman was saying, so.
I make a motion. We accept this addendum.
Okay.
As shown.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Anderson, seconded by Vincent, to accept the addendum with the voluntary annexation agreement. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay. All right, item number two, moving right along. Discuss and take action to pay town's legal bill of $780 for la, for last month.
I'm in favor of it, and I'd say that for future bills like this, we might want to put it on the consent agenda, just so we can save some time, especially if it's gonna be a monthly payment.
That's not a bad idea.
Did I miss it in the packet? We didn't get the itemized statement this time.
Um, you didn't?
We got a list of charges, but it wasn't itemized.
Hmm. So, would you like to see that?
Yeah.
Okay, here you go. Here you go.
Thanks.
I did ask Attorney Berman if he minded that itemization going out in the packet. He said he didn't mind.
Oh, really?
But he said there might be, he did appreciate me asking. He said there might be a time that it would be, he is careful, but he said he, he might not want it to be in certain delicate issues. Okay, did you want to say that? Okay.
So, are we ready to make a motion?
There is nobody to speak on this at this time.
Then I make a motion. We accept the invoice from Mr. Berman for $780.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Anderson, seconded by Fowler, to accept and pay this legal bill of $780 for last month. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay. Number three, discuss and take action to pay the annual TML property liability, which includes, they, we kind of got it piecemeal last year, so this, and this is all lump sum, and they're trying to get it all at one time now. But the TML property liability, the city liability, insurance premiums, the workman's comp, which, by the way, we did get a reimbursement on some of that because it was mid-year, and then cyber coverage premiums, which the cyber coverage did go up, but it's a total of $2,358.12 for all of that. And I got that quite late, I think Friday night. But I am thankful to have it, so I'm hopeful that you all got that. I'm seeing that Mike has it.
So Jana emailed this? Go ahead, Brian. I was just curious, does that include insurance on the Town Hall building?
Mm-hmm. It's everything. And they worked hard to try and get it all together, because we, again, we were doing, had done it piecemeal throughout the year, and they were trying to get it all together, so it wasn't so confusing.
So did we have the law enforcement liability last year? I don't remember that one.
Well, so since we had to have workman's comp, it kind of stepped us up into a higher level. We were in the micro cities, and now we're kind of not the micro city anymore, so they mandate that you do, that you, that you have, that you have the law enforcement coverage. And there's not really a way to get out of that, so.
And what about the automobile insurance for any hired and, Jana says it's for any hired and/or non-owned by the town.
Right. I asked, I asked Angela Matraeus, who is the underwriter, what that is about, and that is what that's for. And we don't have any, obviously, we don't have any automobiles owned by the town, but if, but again, it's kind of, we are mandated to have it. So there's not really, we can't just excise that from the policy. So it does, for those watching and listening, it does cover liability on law enforcement if one of the sheriff's deputy, for instance, had, had something. And it does help with any kind of lawsuits on that. We have the building insurance, workman's comp, personal property, general liability, errors and omission liability. So it is kind of all inclusive there.
I just want to dig in one more time to make sure. I know we have property liability. Do we have, like, regular insurance on the Town Hall, if it's damaged?
So, so general liability, because I've, on each of these things, I have, the real and personal property, I believe that covers some of that, and then the, the general liability.
The real and personal property, I, I agree.
So there's a huge packet, and he has it highlighted here. Thank you, Mike. So it does cover $189,750 in the contents of $11,500 at this address of 5671 CR 323.
Okay.
And that is called real and personal property schedule.
I just wanted to set that up for later conversation. Thank you.
Okay.
Is it a one-year policy?
It is. So it does have an aggregate limit of $2 million. It has a $50,000 cyber extortion aggregate sublimit.
So I'd like to answer Mike's question. It's May 28, '24 is the date it's due to?
So it's due the end of this month, and it will be a year policy.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Evy, is there, I don't see a number three here. I see it, oh, wait a minute. It's sticking. Okay, there's no one to sign up. I have to speak on this. I see. Okay.
I make a motion. We accept this TML insurance as shown.
Okay. I know my house insurance is a lot more than this. So, okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have Okay, we have a motion by Anderson, second by Fowler, to accept this all-inclusive annual TML property liability, city liability, insurance premiums, workman's comp, and cyber coverage premiums of $2,358.12. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, number four, discuss and take action on the ordinance to canvass the May 6 election results. Okay, so we did get the Hunt County canvas, I think, a week ago. They, they only, they had one provisional, and they were decisive in getting that out. Kaufman County, on the hand, we, I didn't get any information from them until last night about, close to six o'clock, and they had reportedly nine provisionals, and they had a board come in yesterday. I don't, my understanding was it was people outside the county, but I'm not 100% sure on that. They just said they'd bring them in, and then they decide on the provisionals. And again, provisional ballots are for those who aren't, you know, they, they go ahead and let them vote, but they're not sure that they actually are valid, because they're not sure they're, they're actually citizens who are able to vote in the town of poetry election. So then the board decides if they are truly in the town, or maybe they're not. So.
And when do we get those results?
So that came last night, and Secretary Jana sent that out, I think, at nine o'clock last night or something.
I'm looking at it, but it shows, it shows unofficial, and it shows zero provisional, oh, ED votes.
So when it says, yeah, I know, they have their own little code. Early day, so they have early voting, and then they have election day, election day is ED, election day voting provision, when it says ED provision, that is the provisional vote. So two of the votes out of the nine did count, so, and then these were added in.
Terry, when you have an opportunity, not that it affects this vote much, but did you see if I was on that list? Because I didn't get anything after nine o'clock last night.
Did I see a what?
Do you see if I'm on the, the two list?
Okay, and I can give you this, if you'd like to look at it. And there is an extra copy over there.
I noticed last night, Brian, you weren't. I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, the, the, Jonathan Blake's on there, and you've been removed.
So the handoff begins.
Whoops, I had nothing to do that. All right, but I can give you my copy if you'd like.
Simeon Sharon has, I just wanted to look it over real quick.
Okay, sure. And, and so the two votes, I did go ahead and add those into the ordinance, so right after I received that, I think it was 5:38 last night, within the hour, I amended the ordinance to include those two votes, and it kind of went down. It added, it added two votes to Haley Dennis, it added two votes to Chad West, two to Mike Jaffe, two to Jennifer McFarland, one to Patrick Smith, and then it had one undervote. And that, what, what that means, means is the undervote is, means someone just didn't vote. They didn't vote for five, they voted for four. So I did go ahead and add it to the ordinance, and so you'll see that in the packet, I included the original one, and then the amended one should have a total of 557 votes. And that's about 40%, and after the election directors called me, they said, you know, that was really good attendance. If you had 40% of your, of a May election, that was really good, because apparently in the May election, the average was like 6.5%. So it's pretty sad.
Wow.
Pretty sad. So even though I was not, you know, that happy with it, apparently, that's just really good for a May election. I know, I talked to Mayor Craig of Union Valley, and I think they had 10%, so. So on this ordinance, I went ahead and, Hunt County, we had 88 early and absentee votes, and then the total votes received on election day was 314, and that's a total from Hunt County of 402 votes. Kaufman County, it was 100 early votes, which I thought was very interesting, because there was 100 early votes, and then there was 53 on election day, plus the two provisional votes, so that's a total of 55, and then that was a total from Kaufman County of 155 votes. Combined totals were 557, as I mentioned. And then you have Office of Mayor Tara Sinkovich, 297 votes received, the percentage of that is 53.32%. Haley Dennis, 260 votes, with the two provisional added, and that's a total of 46.68%. And then on the Office of Councilmember, Chad West received 254 votes, that's 10.28%. Jonathan Blake, 262 votes, and that's 10.6%. Mike Jaffe, 429 total votes, and that was with the two provisional added, that's 17.36%. Ivy Campbell, 256 votes received, that's 10.36%. Jennifer McFarland, 141 votes, that's with two provisional added, 5.7% of the vote. Patrick Smith, 244 votes, that's with one provisional added, that's 9.98%. Terry Fowler, that was 318 total votes, that's with two provisional added, that's 12.87%. And then you have Tom Anderson at 284 votes, that's 11.49%. Simeon White, 282 total votes, and that's 11.42%. So the results of that, when we combine the, the two counties, which is a task, in, so we have, in the Office of Mayor Tara Sinkovich, calendar, Councilmember Mike Jaffe, and these are all two-year terms, Councilmember Terry Fowler, Councilmember Tom Anderson, Councilmember Simeon White, and Councilmember Jonathan Blake.
Excuse me, let me ask real quick, have, have we received any notice that anybody has disputed the election?
I have not. I did ask someone who had difficulty voting in November, they had filled out the affidavit as they were supposed to, because remember, in the fall, we, we tried to promote, you know, hey, if you had some trouble in the past, feel, make sure you fill out your affidavit, and he did that, and he had no trouble this time. And in the, in the past, we had upwards of 60 provisional votes, and so to have a total of 10, nine from Kaufman County and one from Hunt County, I think that each of the counties are, and the citizens have done just that. And it is a citizen responsibility to, you know, to make sure that they're registered, and that if there's any problems to, you know, no one else can do that, not the spouse, not a council member, they can't do that for you. You have to go and, and file the affidavit, and as we know, the, the state mandates that if any part of your property, even a foot of your property, of your primary domicile is connected or in the town proper, then you get to choose whether you get to vote or not. So, but if the county, so if you haven't made that choice publicly, or then you might have to fill in affidavit to do so. But they decide all that, so.
So, there's, there's three I know of, there's several other that, that's, I guess, voted provisional, but there's three that said they voted provisional, and, and they are on the, the list from Kaufman County as eligible voters. So if they all voted provisional, those three, there's only two counted. So I'm curious on how we rectify those three that I know are, they're on the list provided by Kaufman County as eligible voters. Their entire properties are in the town.
So I don't handle all that?
So do we just call Tandy and ask her?
You, you can call Tandy.
Okay.
Because I had, Deanie gave me the name of the provisional in Hunt.
Okay.
She checked with the Secretary of State, and that's public information, and so if you called or send a note to Tandy.
Yeah, I don't think it changes the election, but.
It doesn't, but it's.
But one more provisional vote that I see should clearly count.
In what county was that?
It's in Kaufman County.
In Kaufman County?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know who the board is, I don't know, I don't have any of the information.
I'll just send an email.
But I did, I have requested.
Doesn't affect this, does it?
No, I, I have, well, I mean, if, the, the board decided yesterday, the election board, and there is an issue, then you definitely need to talk to Tandy about that. Tandy?
I don't think it changes anything, but if they're on the, the list that was provided before the election of eligible voters, and then they tried to vote, and they had to vote provisional, I don't know why, three of them wouldn't count. It looks like two of those probably counted, but regardless, it doesn't change, I don't think.
So I have, I have myself requested an updated list, so that we can have an updated list. I don't currently have a list that's like a year old, so I don't even have a.
I'll share the one I have.
The most current list. So, okay.
So us canvassing this is, we're canvassing the data that we've received?
Basically, yeah.
Okay.
We're just.
That's fair enough.
Yep. So we have Citizen Shelley Smith.
Okay, so what was done prior to the election to verify the voter list? Anything?
That's not our responsibility. That's Election Division's responsibility.
So you don't know if there were any voters found outside of the poetry area that are on the voter list?
Again, that's the Election Division of each county, that is their purview. We have nothing to do with that.
Is there going to be an election committee going forward from now on?
Again, the Elections Division is hired, we have a contract with them, they handle all of that. In fact, we're supposed to not even deal with, legally, we can't. We can't have anything to do with that. They legally have to handle that.
But an election committee would ensure that things were filed on the deadlines and that sort of thing? Are we going to have any of that?
Tom and I looked into that in the fall, and we were told explicitly to hands-off, do not touch it.
So no citizen committee or anything?
Well.
Because, well, like, who is supposed to get all of this stuff on the calendar? Which this year, it was 30 days late. So who's supposed to do that? If nobody's supposed to touch it, how does it happen?
So the city secretary is mandated to put things out, and, and the only thing that was late was the candidates, who were, the notice of candidates, because we didn't have a city secretary at that time, but everything else was on time. So we, legally, you understand legally, it has to be, we can't do that legally. Now, if the citizen wants to buy signs that say get out and vote, absolutely, they can, as long as they don't endorse, you know, without, I mean, they just can't. Legally, it has to be handled by the Elections Division or a company that is in agreement with that.
So the State Elections Division is supposed to put it on our website and all that sort of stuff to make the announcements for all of that? Or should we have a committee?
The city secretary's responsibility is to do that, and she did do that.
Well, when we had a secretary?
Well.
So if we don't have a secretary for the next election, then nothing gets posted?
In, if we have a proposition, then I can do that, but if I am running for office, I cannot do that legally. So that was where our sticky wick it was. So if, but we have, we have a city secretary, so anyway, we do. All right, Patrick Smith? Okay, Joshua Sinkovich? Okay. Okay, anything else?
So to pass this, do we need to make the amendments of the numbers?
I've already amended that.
Was the new one online?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, the new one. Update format's a little different. It's 2023-5-01 is the clue that it's the newer one.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I put that on, because it is the first ordinance, so.
Yeah, the other one is.
So it has been labeled 2023, ordinance number 2023-5-0501.
Yeah, and it, it does have the correct numbers on it.
Thank you for checking that.
So make a motion, we accept the ordinance for canvassing the election.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Anderson, second by Councilmember Vincent, to accept the canvas ordinance of number 2023-0501. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to number five, discuss and take action on the addendum to right-of-way ordinance. So this came into play when we were, all right, well, going back and forth with some of the, well, actually FEC, who, when they have a franchise agreement already with us, and they, you know, they're kind of, where we receive quite a bit of our revenue already, then their fees are waived, because we are, they're kind of grandfather clause in. But the question came up, is, is the insurance going to be sufficient for what is needed? And the attorney says yes, it'd be under item four. And there's one of four items for the construction security, there's a construction security positive of 150% of the cost of that, and so the insurance actually, but in order to make it a little more straightforward for our, our vendors, or folks who are asking for this right-of-way application and permit, it just makes it easier for them, and it's just a little more straightforward. So Attorney Berman submitted a, an addendum to, to make it a little more straightforward. So.
We know, Tara, I don't, I don't have any feel for the size of these numbers, but, you know, it's big numbers, 5 million, 10 million, these industry standard numbers that he used?
I asked him, I, I thought that was a high for, for that minimum, and of course, council could make it lower. I just felt like it was pretty high.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they're used to big numbers.
I, I mean, Encore might be, but I don't know that, you know, Spectrum or one of these other, you know, small.
Spectrum probably is, but I would have concerns about Monster.
Monster, some of the smaller companies, I, I have concern as well, so I felt it was pretty high.
What is our solid waste vendors? It's 1 million, 2 million, isn't it?
It's 1 million for them. We lowered it, remember? We felt like with them, we should make it a little easier for them.
I think for the lack of infrastructure we have, I don't see a reason why a million wouldn't. I don't want to cause undue hardship to, to someone trying to do work in the right-of-way. That seems like a lot of money to me, 5 million dollars.
Yeah.
And Brian, you have experience with some of that, what is your thought on that?
I wasn't on the, the accounting side, so.
So do you think it should be, I mean, it's, it's 10 million, 5 million minimum, and 10 million, 5 million per occurrence and 10 million aggregate, so that seemed pretty steep, but, I mean, I think.
Yeah, now, I do know back in, like, the early 90s, my dad and I had a car lot, and we had to have 2 million per vehicle, so, and I think that the law may have changed since then, but that was, and that was insurance, or that was the bond. So, I mean, it was, it was like 60 bucks to carry that bond, but, you know, it was cheap. So, you know, whether or not the, the numbers are what we think they are is a whole different thing, but it would be nice to know if it's an industry standard. And, you know, we don't need to get into the business of our, our vendors, but again, if it's 60 bucks to carry a couple million, then, yeah, that's not an undue hardship.
I'm thinking in the context of what's going on down the road with the tree trimming and spectrum and all that, is it, you know, what are we insuring against and who's receiving? So I'm thinking the bucket truck, let's say the bucket truck goes haywire and swings out in traffic, and somebody hits it, and they're killed, you know, that, I mean, a million dollars is not a lot of money in a.
Right.
Automobile suit these days, so, but is it, is it destruction of other people's stuff in the right-of-way, or is it destruction of citizens' property? You know, if they tear up your gate or wreck your, I don't know what.
The way I read it, it was a destruction of city property or town property, which we don't have a whole lot out there.
Right under that, I'm reading, it says, personal and advertising injury, owners and contractors protective liability, explosion, collapse, or underground hazards, XCU. Coverage limits may be reduced upon demonstration of fiscal responsibility acceptable to the town. So that's kind of their out, I guess. So we're saying, hey, we'd like you to have this, because it does include products completed operations to be maintained for one year if applicable, and so maybe we.
Well, again, I don't know that this is a bad starting point. We can always pass this and amend it later if somebody comes to us and says, we just can't do that.
That's my suggestion, is pass it and then.
Well, it is what our attorney recommended.
If there's objections.
Yeah.
By them that says, we just can't do it, we can come back and review it again.
Of course, when you do have someone wanting to get a meter in, or, like, I've, I've had lots, I mean, there've been, I've had several people or vendors trying to get things accomplished, and they want it like yesterday, so time is of the essence. But I do see that out clause, the coverage limits may be reduced upon. So time is of the essence. But I do see that out clause, the coverage limits may be reduced upon demonstration of fiscal responsibility acceptable to the town. So it might be that, I don't know, do you want to take it case by case, and keep that there, and then?
Well, and this reminds me too, it's a little bit of a rabbit trail, but what about Poetry Water? I mean, are they going to be subject to permits and insurance and all? Because they're probably the tiniest of the operators in our right-of-way.
So-
Their right-of-ways are on the city property, I mean, on the citizens' property. Now, they do cross streets and stuff, but,
They go out onto the state.
But your easements are typically on the citizens' property.
Okay.
So, but they do cross the streets and stuff. And I had a small conversation with Philip about that, but I think we're the one writing the rules, so I don't know.
Yeah, do y'all have that type of insurance? I mean, I wouldn't imagine y'all would.
By y'all, do you mean Feltler?
Yes, well, no, I mean,
No.
the representatives here of the Poetry Water.
I don't know what our coverage is. I can't speak honestly about it.
Any idea on that?
And just to be clear, this was brought on by FEC wanting us to do this, right?
Well, they, they were a little confused by the, their legal said, hey, you don't have an insurance requirement. And like, well, we kind of do, because it has to, any, one of the four things that the state requires is insurance, but it wasn't spelled out, and it was confusing. So I'm like, well, let's just spell it out and make it easier. So, but this, I don't know, I think that's-
You, so, you said that FEC is wanting to put in a meter, but we already have FEC fairly well grandfathered in, so it's not going to interrupt FEC installing a new meter correctly?
It is.
It is?
Well, so it's been kind of back and forth with them for like weeks now. And I've presented the ordinance, I presented the application fee for them, or the application form. I did get it, and they did send it back filled out, but their question was about insurance. I said, well, it's one of the four things. You can present insurance, and then we'll all be good. And then the fees waived, because we already have a grandfather clause agreement with them. So they don't have to pay a hundred dollar fee every single time they're in our area, because they're in our area quite a bit. And we already are receiving franchise revenues from them. So there's, and that's one of the reasons we already have that agreement with them. But it did come up in part because of what their questions were. They were confused by the, the ordinance. They're used to seeing some sort of insurance requirement spelled out.
Well, this does that, so I think it gets us over the hurdle. And again, we can, you guys can come back and revisit it in the future, if needed.
Get into a predicament to Tara's point. In 1A at the bottom, it says, "Coverage limits may be reduced upon demonstration of fiscal responsibility acceptable to town."
So-
If we got in a pickle, we could say we're satisfied that FEC is adequately insured. Go ahead and put the meter in.
And this is an administrative thing, the clause here, I believe. So if, it's not like, I don't, I don't think that that's something, in, in what I've ascertained from David. So there's a little bit of administrative leeway. So I could present it maybe on the forum, and if you guys think it's acceptable, it's sort of an administrative role. It's not something that you actually have to vote on, since it's already in the ordinance. So it could be discretionary, and then I could, you know, consult with, you know, two or more, you know, two of you at least, and then I'll put it on the forum, and if you guys are, you know, and we could have a special meeting if we need to. But if you were in agreement, then we wouldn't necessarily, because it is, it is written in this, that there is some flexibility there.
But I guess, I'd say, we're not experts on this. They are, contractors, and Mr. Berman presumably. So I guess, as Mike said, I'd say, go ahead and pass it, and if we get some pushback, then we come back and review it. If not, then it flies like it is. And that would be my suggestion.
Well, and you, if you have a big event of, you know, a big catastrophe, I could see where it could easily, it could go into the millions, multi-millions of dollars. I mean, God forbid, but it does happen.
Yeah.
Well, absolutely. I agree with that for lawsuits.
So do we need to email Berman about the applicability of this and who's a vendor and who's not? To Mike's point, is, is Poetry Water a, a vendor or a contractor that's, this is applicable to?
Yeah, I think we could. I think, I touched on this before, yeah.
We need to figure out if, because in my opinion, just to be clear, when I had this conversation with Tara, I didn't feel like this was needed right now, because FEC is actually working for Spectrum, and that was just my opinion. Their, Spectrum has the permit. They need a power source to energize their system, so FEC was working for Spectrum. So in my mind, this was, I, I didn't see a reason to hold up FEC and Spectrum, but I don't, I don't have a problem, as long as we get it passed, so they can get on with-
Right. I was trying to expedite as much as possible, since again, I don't want to hold up someone's meter. But we have, you know, it's like, okay, just get me the form, and they, they did provide the map of where it was going to be. That's one of the requirements. We waived the fee for FEC, because obvious reasons. And then they just had to fill out the application form, and, but I'm, I'm actually still waiting on the insurance, of all things. I said, look, this is one of the four criterion in our ordinance, but this will spell it out better, so.
Well, to your point, Terry, I think where they're putting in meters for Spectrum's little repeaters along the path, they're working under Spectrum, but their new three-phase coming from down by 276, that's a whole other project. You know, all the tree butchering stuff, that's a, that's a main feeder line they're bringing in to support poetry. So that, that should be a permit, should have insurance and all of that, because that's a pretty big deal.
Do we have any citizen comments?
Okay, right-of-way ordinance, Glenn Strauss. Did you want to know? Okay. Is it? So if council is willing to allow a little bit of administrative leeway, and we can, you know, certainly would bring it past the two signatories, if we were to do something like that, but just, I feel like if we, you know, put it on the forum and discuss that, but hopefully, the bigger companies, that would be no problem for them.
Well, I'd make a motion, we go ahead and accept it, and if you get some pushback, or anybody else does, well, then let us know. Well, I think at the end of the day, our job is to protect the town and the citizens, so this is probably very protective. Yeah, I, I agree. And if we get pushed back, and it puts somebody out of business, or, you know, puts them in jeopardy, we'll come back and rediscover. But I'm the same way. Yeah, and 1A is a good out for that. Yeah. Motion, I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion by Anderson, second by Jaffe, to accept the addendum to the right-of-way ordinance as written. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. And I can mention about Poetry Water. Okay, number six.
Just put it on that same email again.
Discuss and take action on ordinance restricting establishing an ad valorem tax in poetry. So we have ordinance number 222023502. And I think we had this, we were working on this last time, cleaned it up a bit. And is there any discussion on that?
The only discussion I had on there was if we should change it to four-fifths, just, to my mind, it's simplistic. Two-thirds takes more than three voters, so in my mind, four-fifths. That, that was my only edit that I would add. And that was-
And where was that?
It was two sections.
Right, let's see.
Supermajority, section eight.
Yeah.
And then also-
Section nine.
Yeah, and then also nine.
Eight and nine. I mean, essentially the same thing. Two-thirds vote takes four voters, so let's just say four voters out of five.
Now, addressing an issue that Mr. Strauss brought up last time, is, you know, the, the town does need funds. So I wanted just to remind us that also, as, this was basically two bills, or two ordinances that I came up together. But one of them was the, the voluntary fund, that was as an attempt to, to fund the town through that mechanism. So I, I do have some concerns that there, there may not be enough funding. But I'm willing to risk that. But I would like to see the council in the future circle back to the, the voluntary fund idea and see if we can generate some internal funds without having to put a property tax in place.
I think that's also even part of this ordinance, I believe, we still kept it, that says they have to review all possible-
Right.
-funds. And I think that one should be noted and remembered if such a case arises.
And I think that, to, to your point, Tom, on the, the forum, I'm, I'm in line with your number six, that, you know, I don't, I don't see it being something that's going to sneak up on us right now. I'm not opposed to, to us working on this more on the forum, because I'm with you, this is restricting the next, the future councils, maybe after us. I think we're, I think we're all in line that we don't ever want to pass a tax, but I, I think it could do good to have more conversation on it, to your point, on the forum.
Well, and I guess I would point out, I mean, there are things that I do like about it.
A lot.
And, and one of them is, is it requires a vote by the town residents, which I support that. I think that's right. And then I like the idea that it has to be clearly written, presented, documented, made public. I like all those things well. And I guess you're stating, Terry, that my point is, I just don't like the idea of imposing this on future, the strictness on future councils. Because we have no idea in ten or twenty years what they're going to be facing. And I doubt that any of us would be on the council in twenty years. Certainly not me. But I'm not against it. I just don't like the restrictions on future councils.
But, I mean, and as I wrote it, that was the intent, was to restrict future councils. But every ordinance that we pass, and I'm not saying we have to pass it tonight, I mean, you guys debated it as long as you need to, to feel comfortable with it. But I'm just saying, every ordinance that we pass is a restriction on future council.
Sure.
So, I mean, that, that's kind of the role that we're, we have here, is to make sure we're doing what is right for the town, not just today, but in the long term.
And to your point-
I guess I would add that this is not just another ordinance. This is a major thing.
Sure.
And so I'd say it's elevated over a lot of the other works that we do. And while I, I do agree with most of the points, I mean, my opinion is, yes, I think we should have a lot of this. It's just I don't like the idea that we restrict future councils when we don't know what they're going to be sitting against. And that's my only point. And then I also do think, just as Mr. Strauss made a point last week, or last meeting, rather, he has a view. Well, I, I think there's probably other people that have views, some maybe different, some the same. But I guess I would say, we should be very careful stepping into this with the restrictions. Not the issues that I mentioned that I like, I'm comfortable with that, but the restrictions, I don't think we should step in too lightly. It should have a lot more broader input from the citizens or the residents, as well as maybe other experts, not just citizens, as to what are we putting out here? Because like Mr. Strauss pointed out, there's examples that we need to be thinking of and be aware of, and that's down the road. And that's my only point. I don't want a tax. I just don't want to impose something. I mean, we all, none of us want to be told what to do. That's kind of what we're like, all of us. Well, this is telling future councils what they can't do. And that's not something that I would really like. They should make that decision.
I align with you there, just because I, I think you, you wrote a very good policy. It takes lots of city meetings, our council meetings, lots of citizen input, and, and mostly, I like the vote. To your point that we're always restricting future councils, yeah, a lot of these, though, can be swapped off like this. The implementation, I think, could be the hangup. So if a future council says, yeah, we need it, they have all the, they have all the meetings that are required, and then the town, unanimously, I mean, overwhelming, well, we've still, the implementation part of this ordinance draws it out to the next election, right? And, and that, to your point, I see could be a hangup. So I, I think it's well-written, but I wouldn't mind, you know, talking about that again, because the town's going to change, it's going to evolve. And, and one day, the, the people might say, yeah, we're okay with a tax, because we're tired of our roads, or we're tired of whatever. I think the implementation part of it may be pulled back a little bit.
And see, I can see that, and I'm actually for it, but in the same way that I'd rather be over in any restrictions, in the same way that we're over in maybe the requirement on insurance, this can be amended. It just requires four fifths, if we accept your edit, which I think would be good, four fifths of the council to do it. So if they don't like any of this, if the citizens don't like-
Wouldn't go into effect until after the next election.
It's implementation as well.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the process is the punishment, to use a popular term.
That's, that's true. There is the chance of them just writing another ordinance that tears this one apart somewhat. I know that's been thrown out there as a possibility. I don't know how, I hope that that isn't a real possibility. But they can always change it if they want, and this does put some restrictions on them, but only in as much as it'll make them be careful. It will make them work a little bit if they really want to put a tax on everybody. But I don't think it'll make it impossible.
Well, let's hear from some of our citizens. How about Glenn Strauss?
I'm Glenn Strauss, 11072 County Road, 2454 Poetry. And like I told you before, I've worked in property taxes for forty years. I was in California when Proposition 13 passed, passed in nineteen seventy-eight. And it froze taxable values at what they were, whatever they were worth in nineteen seventy-five. And it has absolutely wrecked the infrastructure of California. They don't, they don't have any money. And I just, I think it's unrealistic to pass a real severe ordinance, because this town's going to grow, roads are going to get worse. And the council is the one who would suffer the pain of passing a property tax. So you're hiding behind an ordinance that you're passing yourself. Here, you're hiding a bunch, behind a bunch of sandbags. Now, some restriction, yes, but this two-thirds, or whatever you're talking about, I'm opposed to that, because I've seen what it did in California. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Del Bryant? Patrick Smith? Joshua Sinkovich? Oh, did he leave? Okay, okay. Well, and we, we don't know the future. That makes it difficult, and it's yet to be seen how much revenue we actually do receive from sales and use tax. We won't really know for like an entire year, so.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, really, most people are in agreement. I don't think most of us want a property tax now. Most of us realize that one will probably be impending in the future, and that we should have some restrictions in play, and that this might be too strict. So I'd love to hear if anybody has any specific, you know, sections that they want to cut, or parts of sections. Because, I mean, this is how we're going to get through this and pass this very important ordinance, is us pointing out specific things and cutting them like we did last meeting with. And I think very good sections are very good to remove the sections that we did last time around. If there's any more, I think let's go ahead and knock that out. Maybe we don't get it passed this meeting, but if we've got anything, might as well progress.
I don't disagree with Glenn Strauss. The only reason I brought up four fifths, because it just makes numbers sense, right? Two-thirds is three point three. So I'm okay with the majority being three. But I just want to call an apple an apple. If it takes four voters, if that's the intent of the council, it should say four voters. If the intent of the council's three, it should say three fifths.
Thank you for that clarification.
But that's the only reason, yeah, that I wanted that in there. I don't disagree with that. Could devastate, you know, you could have four council members that's adamant against it, and one that's saying, man, we really need it. So that, that's the only reason for the four fifths. But as far as implementation, I'm, I'm with Tom. I think, I think maybe we should consider time indifference on the implementation, because we do have all the meetings set up in there, and we do have a citizen vote, which, which, what does that vote look like? It doesn't say, is that going to be held at a regular voting time, so it doesn't-
That wasn't my audition, so.
Let's see, what, what section is that in?
So I guess my concern is a little bit that it's repeated twice daily on official broadcast media, such as radio, television, or equivalent communication media. And so if we're needing money, that sounds pretty expensive.
But that's only if we have, that's only if the town has those facilities. If we're not doing broadcast media, then we're not needing to go to, you know, channel four, channel five, and put something out there. That's if we're doing it internally.
I guess I'd say, add, point about the four fifths, actually, I think this is such a- Actually, I think this is such a serious, important thing to do. I, I have no problem with the four fifths, just because of its importance. In fact, that's my home feeling. This is not just another ordinance. This is a really significant ordinance, and it deserves time and, and more input than we've had before. I, I mean, I, I think, I appreciate what Glenn has said. And I would say there are probably other people that could give us advice that are more experts than we. So I, I guess my only feeling is, is we need to take our time, have more meetings, have more presentations. In Tar, whether it's a matter of having this as an only item and encourage people to come, I'm in, I'd say I'm in favor of that. It's just that's an important issue that we shouldn't take lightly, this ordinance, I mean.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's, it's more important to get right than to get right now, so.
I try.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
So are we in agreement with the four fifths? Is that how you want to word it? Four fifths of the total members?
I'm in favor of that. I think that's good. I mean, even in our federal government, in some things, a supermajority is required. And it's two-thirds, which in this case is really four-fifths, and that's clear. So, I mean, I'm in favor of that. I can also see cutting Section 5 with the implementation date. Because after all, that's, I mean, we'll still get a property tax if it's implemented. That just allows less flexibility for implementing it.
I would suggest that if we're not going to pass it tonight, that in the future, there's a workshop or something held. And, and we go ahead and reclaim the time that would otherwise be used to discuss it.
Yeah.
That's, Brian, I guess that's my point.
Suggest a workshop.
There's a special workshop, or whatever form should be.
Okay. All right, noted. Okay, so.
No action.
No action, except maybe amend that to say four fifths, and then we can consider a workshop, maybe.
And, and I guess I'll just go on record, I agree with Glenn Strauss. I would like to see a majority, just because all that does is take it to, to a vote. That's the majority of the council saying, let's take it to the citizens. That's not a four-fifth vote. That's, that's all this is, that's all that's allowing us to do, either change it or take it to the citizens. So I'm okay with the majority rule on that, but we can debate that, or not debate it, but we can discuss it on the, on the forum or, or another platform.
Okay, so no action tonight, and we'll discuss it later. All right, number seven. Discuss and take action, letters to the mayor, mayors and commissioners of Hunt County, ordering them to consider a resolution opposing the formation of special use districts by developers. So Councilmember White worked on this, and then this was just yesterday. I just kind of put our seal on it, and I didn't put that in the packet, just because it's not been passed. It is the same one. I just kind of, and then I actually made a signature page, just because it kind of lends, that way each of you can sign it, and it's a little more oomph to it.
But this is the same.
It's the same one. All I did was put our seal on it, and I put the date on there, date, place, and then I put a place where each of us could sign it, so that it looks a little more substantial. And it's, it's just.
When are you planning on mailing?
I didn't change anything else.
When are you planning on mailing these?
Well, as soon as it's approved, and then we can each put our John Hancock on it.
Sam, before Thursday?
If you wish.
I'm, I don't know if it should be my signature or Jonathan's.
Oh, okay, I hear you. Yeah, why don't we go ahead and do, we could actually sign it tonight if it's approved, and then that way we'll get it out. Because actually, then I would have to change your name on there.
And that's all assuming that it's passed.
Okay.
But I like to the.
I have to say, I, I don't have any problem with it. And I do appreciate you putting in that last sentence at the end of the first paragraph, following his opinion on the matter. Because it's some opinion, some fact. Anyway, from there on in, I don't have any problem with it.
Okay. Okay, we have letter Glenn Strauss. Did you want to speak? Okay, he passed us on that.
So we're going to mail this to Hunt County, or to all the cities in Hunt County, or? Or we're going to mail it?
Well, he wrote it to, I mean, I think that if Hunt County wanted to do like Kaufman County did, then they would present it to all the mayors. I don't even have all the mayor's of all the cities' addresses at this point, but we could research that. So, but we could definitely send it to Judge Stovall of Hunt County, and then he could disseminate that. But however you, you want. I mean, on Thursday, when Secretary Teresa's in, we could put her to task on getting, collecting all those, and then we could definitely make those copies. The only caveat to that would be that we would need two signature pages from each of you, and then have to photocopy, probably.
Well, we can't, if, if the notary isn't here, we can't sign it, can we?
Well, you can. I, she attests my signature, she's only attesting my signature. You all could, you could sign it, and then, and then before I sign, I will have the notary, Janice Shelton.
I, I was understanding she could legally could not do that. She has to see us.
She's only attesting my signature. She wouldn't have to attest each of yours. Yeah, I could sign it in front of her, but each of you just sign above here. She's attesting my signature.
You know, just a light in the game thought, I wonder if it would be helpful to include the Kaufman County example in this, so they see kind of what we would like them to ask Hunt County to create, right?
I think so. I mean, what I'd originally envisioned is that we send them both the minutes for Rockwall, the ordinance for Rockwall, and the Kaufman County ordinance, might as well give them all the supporting documents. And then that we send this to the cities and the county itself in Hunt, so that the other cities can hopefully put pressure or suggest to Hunt to implement this, so we aren't alone in our efforts, but also give it to Hunt, so that they have the ability to consider it just with us.
So as written, I could, we could go ahead and sign tonight for Hunt County, but then I don't know how, I don't even know how many cities are in Hunt County, so that would have to be researched and all the addresses found. But I do know that it probably would carry more weight if Hunt County just went ahead and did, did that. But I'm open to what, what council wants to do.
I'd just send it to whoever will listen.
So can we? Is there a motion?
Oh, I guess I still, I would like to hear from Jenna, that she's okay with us signing this and then her stamping it. I was under the impression she couldn't do it. And I understand what you're saying, Tara, but, I mean, when I've signed things before a notary, they had to be there.
So if, now Secretary Jenna is working from home, and now her husband's in, while he's getting tests done tonight in an emergency room. She was, I was trying to get her to come in for a little bit, I think Thursday afternoon. So maybe before this swearing-in ceremony, we could take care of this if you'd like. And then that way, that, you know, we, and then we could maybe have all the copies needed.
She needs to witness or be present? She'll see it on the video, she's going to see us signing it.
Well, I, I don't know, Mike. I mean, that's, they have certain rules.
And notaries do, yeah.
Normally, the seal says before me.
He needs to be comfortable, it's us that sign it, I get that, but I don't know what the evidence is.
If, if, I mean, the council members don't normally sign these, but if you fill that.
Can each just drop by the feed store and sign it?
Yeah, I don't have any problem signing it, I just want to make sure that Jenna is, she's in the right place. Because I don't know that this is the legal without her being present.
So we would have, so if Jenna comes before the swearing-in ceremony, like it, she said she would come in the office maybe around 4:00 on Thursday. If each of you can be there at that time, then we could all, we could take care of it at that time, in front of Jenna.
Another consideration is, this is not a legally binding document. Why do we have to have anybody attest to our signatures?
I was wondering the same thing myself. I mean, this is just an opinion letter that we're sending out. It's not even an ordinance.
Well, and my point was that she was just going to attest that I was the final signature. I wasn't playing on her attesting each of you. So the test is above my name. She's, would attest that I did confirm that, yes, each of you signed that. So that was my take on it, but, and then we can put the seal on it.
So none of this affects our ability to go ahead and approve it as a council?
No.
We just need to work the detail of the signature and timing, so.
That's, that's right, that's my feeling.
So I make a motion that we approve distribution of this to Hunt County and the cities within Hunt County, along with the other materials that will help it be more self-explanatory, Kaufman, Rockwall, minutes, whatever Simeon approves or suggests.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
Yeah, and I agree, and then let Jenna decide how the signatures should work. But I agree with that, and I'm fine.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Jaffe, seconded by Anderson, to approve the letter and disbursement to, as he stated, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously.
There's 15 cities in Hunt County.
There you go.
That's not overwhelming.
16, we're not counting.
I meant to go buy some more stamps. We used them all up. So then we would have to, if we didn't photocopy, we'd have to have like 16 letters, at least. Which, that's a lot of signatures, but you can do it.
I got a rubber stamp.
All right, item eight, discuss and take action on the ordinance to personalize the town of Poetry Oaths to be in accordance with the duties required for town officials. Okay, so Lakewood Village had, had personalized their oath, and, you know, the, the state has just kind of a generic one. And this one, Attorney Berman said, you know, it requires an ordinance to do that. But what I was realizing is, in the powers and duties of mayor, the mayor is the chief executive officer of the municipality. The mayor shall at all times actively ensure the laws and ordinance of the municipality are properly carried out. The mayor shall perform the duties and exercise the powers prescribed by the governing body of the municipality, and that goes on. So if that is the duty of a type A general law mayor, then I believe the council members and the mayor should take an oath to uphold that. And in the oath that we currently have by the state, it's very generic, that you're going to uphold the constitution and the laws of the state of Texas. But this goes one step further and says, you know, uphold the town's ordinances. And that is what I'm mandated to, to do as well. And I think to be unified, that we should all.
Well, I don't want to be nitpicky on this, but I probably won't be in favor of it whenever we vote. For a couple reasons. First, because that section is part of state law, and we're already swearing to uphold it anyways. But also, I don't like to mess with oaths too much. I'm not a huge fan of them. I'm a let your yes be yes and your no be no kind of guy. And adding to that formality or editing what the state has, I just am not personally in favor of. I wouldn't want to change or require people to take a different oath than what Texas is already doing.
And for me, we set a precedence and a principle that we would not rewrite into our ordinances, items that are already existing in state law. State law says that this is what you're going to do, and you're swearing to abide by state law. Therefore, you're attesting that you will abide by this section. So that's, that's my catch with it.
Okay. In the roundabout way, you, you are, yeah? But it just makes it more clear. Okay, are there any other comments?
I guess I would say the phrase, "to the best of my ability," kind of leaves things so that if there's something that we don't know about, or law or ordinance, or that we forgot, because we're all infallible, or not infallible, that, you know, it could happen. And as long as it has that phrase, "to the best of my ability," I believe that means that, if we actually do something that is not in violation of our laws or ordinances, well, it's not because it was intended, it was just because we weren't aware or didn't remember.
So Brian, just for clarification, I think I heard what you said. But your, your point is that you believe this is already covered by the standard oath that we took two years ago?
Correct.
Okay, so it's redundant, and then Simeon, you just don't like.
But you already have to take an oath.
Right. I, I took the oath that says that I will abide by the state law, which says that I will abide by the, the ordinances of the town, et cetera. So I'm, I feel like we're already covered.
Well, what is, I mean, you printed this section out for the mayor, is there a section?
There, there, well, and that's the whole, that's the caveat there, that puts a hole in that. Because it doesn't say that for the council. It says it for the mayor specifically, but it does not specify for the council. So if I'm supposed to ensure that, and the second paragraph is, "the mayor shall inspect the conduct of each subordinate municipal officer."
Which the council is not a subordinate of the mayor.
Right, and shall cause any, and that. So it doesn't actually have a place where council is held accountable in that, that I can tell. Because I did look for a council, and so it says the mayor has to do that. But it doesn't actually say that for the council, and that's a problem. If I'm supposed to actively ensure that the laws and ordinances of the municipality are properly carried out, and the council doesn't have any kind of clause that says that they have to do that, then that could be a problem.
Yeah, but surely.
This, this section.
Surely we haven't found a hole in the.
No.
Well.
And this section is just for the powers and duties of the mayor.
No, and I did look.
To include anything from council.
No, but I did look for the council. I did look for the council, and there was not anything that I could find.
Okay, and this is in the general government code?
General local government code.
I thought it was covered under officers, but I would have to go back and look. So while people are Googling, can we take a quick break?
Sure.
It is almost 8:00. So, all right. Glenn Strauss, did you want to speak to this? Okay, let's get done. All right. All right, the time is 7:59. We'll take a five-minute break. We were having a couple councilmen looking at the local government code to see if they could find anything.
I did. I did.
Did you find something?
Yeah, so duties of a mayor is 22.042. If you scroll down to 22.072, that is, I've lost it. Powers and duties of municipal officers. So it's clearly defined, it doesn't go in as detail as .042, but it is in there, to Brian's point.
What's it say?
Yeah, can you read it for us?
Oh, gosh. "The governing body of the municipality may require a municipal officer whose duties are prescribed by this code to perform additional duties. Governing body may prescribe the powers and duties of the municipal officer appointed or elected to an office under the code." Sorry, I might need your glasses.
Well, and all this is in the context of bond, so I'm not sure.
But it's still, it's the same, it's under the same heading as powers and duties of a municipal officer versus powers and duties of a municipal mayor, right?
It doesn't sound like they're enumerating those powers and duties. It's saying it can, it, since it's saying that it can be assigned by the municipality, it sounds like I'm now moving over to Tara's side of this equation, and we probably should.
Yeah. I mean, because there's another section, .77, let me get to it. That's the removal of a municipal officer. And it clearly defines in there if, if there's malfeasance, incompetency, corruption, misconduct. That they can be removed for those reasons. So that clearly defines what the expectations are, to not conduct incompetency, corruption, misconduct, malfeasance. So, I don't know, I don't necessarily see the reason for the change in the oath.
No, I mean, there's a reason Texas requires that oath, is because it is enough.
She has a little, the mayor has a little more to do with the day-to-day, the finances, the communications. There's a lot to more of that position. I promise I'm going to uphold this position, and if the council sees. I promise I'm going to uphold this position, and if the council sees it fit that we swear in another oath, but, I mean, golly, I don't, I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. One of these guys out here could speak. I don't know when this was edited, but it appears nineteen eighty-seven was the last edit on that. So I guess the state of Texas thought it was sufficient.
Well, I know several towns, though, okay, so this, and to this point, though, the state of Texas is doing a general, a general law, and then they expect the cities to go ahead and, and make, because there are several cities that do this very thing. They make it their own. They make their own.
So the state expects it, or?
Yeah, I was going to ask, how do you know the state expects it?
Well, because the, there are several cities who do cater that to their own town, because the state's not going to say, oh, and, and take the oaths of your, of the town of poetry. They're not going to do that.
Do you know if those are chartered cities, or if they're general?
Well, the charter, they go even further. But we're, you know, we're not under a charter, so.
Well, I don't, I wouldn't think just because some cities pass this ordinance that the state necessarily expects them to. I mean, we pass plenty that the state doesn't necessarily expect us to.
Well, if y'all just want to break the rules and.
Well, do you have any examples?
I'm teasing.
I mean, if, if the county.
I, I just.
Council passes, it's elsewhere to their state.
Well, it started because I was reading this. I was like, man, I'm, I'm supposed to, you know, I don't mind saying that, because I don't feel like, just, the, the rule, you know, that I want to support the constitution, yes, as an American citizen, I want to support the constitution and the state, the rules of Texas. But it goes further and says the laws of the municipality, make sure they're properly carried out. So I feel like if I'm, in my, if I'm supposed to mandate that citizens of our town are properly carrying out the laws and ordinances of the municipality, then I feel like, you know what, I need to hold myself accountable. And so I feel like I should, you know, say this.
Did we get an example of the oath? I guess I printed it out.
The original one?
No, the oath that we're, we're talking about changing too.
It's right here.
In the Constitution, Article sixteen.
So the original one just says, whoops, says this, "I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of blank, of the state of Texas, and will do my best, do, to the best of my ability preserve," or excuse me, "of the state of Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the constitution and laws of the United States and of the state." It ends, and then this one adds, "and the laws and ordinances of the town of Poetry, Texas, so help me God." I mean, I don't know. I just feel like it holds myself accountable if I'm supposed to, if this is, this is in section, local government code, section twenty-two oh four two says this, then, and I'm supposed to carry this out, then I don't want to try and mandate to our citizens something that I haven't done myself. I just feel like it's, it's an integrity thing.
Well, I have to say, I don't, I don't mind this, the way it's written with the town of Poetry, but I do understand what Brian's point is. And that's almost to me a legal issue. So I'm happy with it either way. I don't care. I'm going to do the best I can to the best of my ability, whatever it is, but whether this is a legal issue or not, as Brian has said, I don't know.
And I'm, if, if I misspoke, I apologize, but I'm just saying it's a matter of principle. We, as a council, we decided that we were not going to put another ordinance in place that is already covered by state law. So that, that's, that's my main objection to it.
And, and in the state code, it doesn't specify that.
In the state code, it does not enumerate the
It doesn't.
the responsibilities, and neither does it in the revised oath.
Yeah, and it, well, in that section of state law anyways, I'd have to look into it more, because I'm sure there are other sections than just sections about bonds, as Mr. Jaffe pointed out. So I just have to look at that more. I mean, if this was something else, I'd say, let's just pass it for the sake of moving on, but, you know, it's an oath. It's a big deal. I don't think we should.
So it's one extra line, is it really?
I mean, to me, it is. I think oaths are of the utmost importance. I consider my word to be, you know, one of the most important things to me. My integrity is more valuable than my property, that's for sure.
Well, I.
So to me, it's of the highest importance.
What I'm saying is you're already going to say an oath as a council member, and then it just adds a layer of that, hey, we're going to be loyal to poetry, and we're going to try to uphold the laws and ordinances of the town of Poetry specifically. And since we haven't found, and I did get the new municipal Texas Law Code book, and I did look through it extensively. I did not see anything specifically that mandates that council, which is kind of odd. So I just felt like it, it might be kind of a gap, and I just feel like if that is what I'm required to do, then I feel like at least council members should be as well.
Okay, are there any public comments?
Um, we don't. Glenn already passed on that. So is there?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
We're, we're allowed to add an additional oath. I hear Brian and Simeon's points, but I also hear yours. And I don't see why any of us would have an issue agreeing with oath or writing or otherwise.
Well, and I guess since I co-signed some of the checks, I feel like I'm already bound by that, because a lot of the checks have to do with things that we're doing. So I don't have any problem with it either way. But if, even if we don't pass it, I feel like it still applies to me.
Yeah, I agree. Tara wants to hear us say it. I'm good to say it.
Well, I just, when I, like I said, when I read the, what I'm required to do is a Tex, you know, a Texas mayor of a general law type A town, I just feel like it, it requires this of, of.
Okay, let's, let's put it to a vote.
Yep, let's do.
One, one last comment is, is just, if, if it is voted in the affirmative note that you're voting out the principle that we established previously.
What are you talking about?
That we're not going to write into.
But we didn't find that it was in the code for council members.
And we're not, we're not adding anything specific into it that, and, and the town of Poetry. I mean, that's, that's not a, a specific enumeration of duties, responsibilities. So.
I'll also.
Principles mean, Simeon's word means a lot to him. My word means a lot to me as well, but, you know, principles are one of those things that you, you stand on, or you don't have them.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept this ordinance with the oath as it is written, and so we can get a decision and move on.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Jaffe. All those in favor? And we've got two, and it fails two to three.
Your speech didn't work, huh?
Well, I'm in favor of moving on.
Yes, me too.
That worked.
All right, number nine, discuss and take action on Town of Poetry's first annual scholarship promoting agriculture in our area. So Councilmember Fowler and Jaffe, would you like to speak to this?
That we had one applicant? And they, and they met their requirements?
We had one applicant. There were several interested, but they, they didn't live in the area, per se. This young man does live in the town of Poetry, and he wants to go to welding school, which is one of the things that we, it could be a trade school. And his mother said it was around twenty thousand dollars a year or something, so this is just a drop in the bucket for him, but every little bit helps. Did you want to say anything about that?
No, I mean, the only question I had, and I don't know that we ever got back around to, is the council going to write the recipient in the, now and in the future of the check? Or we're going to give it to the school?
Well, that's something that council could decide upon. I, I feel more comfortable writing the check to the school.
I do too. I do too. And, and sometimes they're after they pass or whatever, and I don't even want to do that. I mean, if, if we have an enrollment page, then I'm, I'm good with writing the check to the school on behalf of the recipient.
So he did have two letters of recommendation, still waiting on the third, so that would be, and of course, I didn't, you know, put it out there, his academic record. We have that, though. And I think he meets all of the, the other criteria. So does, do you want to make a motion that we do that, then?
Can we back up just a second, Tara?
Sure.
So one of the things I didn't realize, and this is not a bad thing, but when we, you and I and Terry started discussing this through email, was what the scholarship was up to financially.
As far as I can, fifteen hundred. So we had Citizen Chad West donate a thousand, Terry Fowler two hundred and fifty, and then we had anonymous two fifty, so I believe it's at fifteen hundred.
Okay, yeah, because I didn't realize it had grown until I saw this.
And if there's someone else who wants to contribute to this, lad, the window of opportunity is closing, but anyway.
That's awesome.
And the whole purpose was to encourage future agriculture-related endeavors, and someone who's a welder and does fencing, and that is certainly applies. So, you know, we put on their agricultural business, agriculture, agriculture economics, aquaculture, animal science, poultry science, entomology, veterinary medicine, or trade schools, including but not limited to the above. And since we have one applicant, and he, you know, he meets the requirements, then.
Yep. The other thing, I don't think we said this yet, but the other thing we discussed is where we actually give this, and Terry had suggested, and I supported the mon, that we do it here at a council meeting.
Okay.
Just, and we can announce it so citizens will know it's happening that night, so if you want to come and cheer for them.
Okay. Chad West? No, okay.
So I'll move to, do we state their name now, or we won't wait?
No, sir, sorry.
Just move to approve the.
Move to approve, and then we could announce it Thursday night if you want.
Yeah, that'd be fine. So I'll make a motion to approve the first annual scholarship, and we will be writing the checks to the school upon enrollment.
Okay, is there?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Fowler, seconded by Tom, uh, Tom Anderson, to make the check out of fifteen hundred dollars of our Poetry's first annual scholarship promoting agriculture in our area to the actual trade school, which at this point is, is for welding. And he has, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. And that is Texas State Technical College, for those who want the details. And we'll announce that later, and next month, we can give him that in our next meeting. All right, so, number ten, discuss and take action on items for the town hall site. So as we continue on, did try to rework and update the proposed budget. Now, to date, we've spent less than three thousand of the proposed fifteen thousand that's been dedicated for the town hall. It has been, it has been there about eight months. We did get the septic done, so the weather cooperated, thankfully, and that did pass inspection. There's a little more dirt work, and I think Roger Hall was going to volunteer for some of that. There, so we have on this proposed budget. We do need the ADA compliant van accessible parking with sidewalk. And Leland Barnett had said he would give a two thousand dollar donation from that, so the quote came out at forty-one fifty. So that's well within our budgeted amount, and he could actually do that now that the septic's in, he could do that, actually, without any problem, if the council approves that. So is there some, and then we have the other item that, that needs to probably happen is the add-on, because it's exposed, we have exposed door, we have an exposed roofing area, and that finish out of that area is, and finishing, and the fellow said he would finish the gap, that is John Steele, who is a framer, for thirty-seven ninety-seven, and that includes a labor quote of sixteen hundred and the materials cost of twenty-one ninety-seven. And that's, he said he would go ahead and just fix the gap that is there with the two-by-four, and I think we heard last time with the strap and the metal strapping, that he felt was, would be really good. So for the thirty-seven ninety-seven and the forty-one fifty, it's well within our fifteen thousand, well, we have, I guess, twelve thousand, a little over twelve thousand dollars left. It's well within that. The, I guess the caveat that we have is we've been recommended to have a roof replacement, but the inspector said it could be one to three years. That, you know, it doesn't have to happen right away. Now, people can guess that all day long, but the inspector, that council member Anderson, said, you know, hey, it could last one to three years. So we don't really have a roof repair in the budget, so, but our new budget, our new fiscal year is only four months from now. So I, I kind of feel like we'd be okay until our new fiscal year, and then we can, you know, address that at that point, maybe.
And that was kind of the point of my questions earlier. I brought this up last, last month, and if we have insurance on this structure, and we have a bad roof on this structure, why can we not have the roof replaced with insurance?
Well, if there's a strong wind or hailstorm.
We've had strong winds and hailstorms since it's been in our possession.
It will be depreciated as well. I'm not saying we shouldn't look at it, but there's a depreciation schedule, and I'm pretty sure those shingles have seen their full depreciation by now.
And I'm not opposed to waiting. I'm, I'm the one that's wanting this roof. I'm not opposed to waiting, but there's no assurance that, that that's going to be put first on the, on the, on the budget. I guess my fiscal responsibility just says, okay, if we, if we accept all this, we still have thirteen hundred dollars remaining. But in all reality, we're a debt-free city that's working on, on our, our income, right? So what, what was our, to date, what, what money did we have available?
Forty-nine thousand.
Forty-nine thousand.
So what are our outstanding debts that, that it's not, and I've asked Jenna for that before, and I think we really need to do.
Our outstanding debts, okay, so last time we had maybe a thousand dollar, well, actually, we had some checks come in already. So it's less than a thousand dollars for the FEC reimbursement. We voted tonight to put in the, the insurance, and the insurance was.
Yeah, so tonight, tonight we spent thirty-one hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Okay, so we don't have much debt. I mean, we don't have any debt, but we do have some bills we approved to pay. So, but again, we've only spent less than three thousand of the slotted fifteen thousand dollars that has already been pre-approved last fall for the town hall site. So, and we've got some great bids. I mean, when Leland is willing to do that for that price, I mean, I think that's wonderful. And his heart is for, you know, to help, and so I think that's great.
So is your ask to take this whole section right here and pass it?
Sure.
Or is your ask, or is your ask for forty-one fifty and thirty-seven ninety-seven?
So, you know, I put tentative goal dates on here, so if, if the will, I mean, can we just, pardon me, I mean, I built my house in nine months, right? So this has been over here eight months, and it's almost ninety percent complete, and we haven't really got very far. So I just feel like, good grief, can we just get this done? But I understand we want to be, so my ask is, yes, can we get this done?
So what about the checks that are going out to the counties for road repairs from last month?
Those have already been cashed.
They've been cashed?
Terry, is this, or Tara, maybe you know, on the closet thing, does that include the roof? Because the last time we discussed this, he wasn't roofing. He was preparing it for a roofer. So a roofer was going to charge extra to do that little piece.
And that little extra was sixty-seven, or six hundred and seventy-something dollars. So it's not a lot, but he would have to do that at the roof at the same, or right at the same time. So there is that, and of course, there's different ways to look at that, the six hundred and seventy dollars or so for the roofing, and then, then you have the actual shingles. So I did, I was trying to call on the break, I was trying to call the roofer who gave us this great bid, and that's the laminate. So we have the one that Mr. Vasquez, I think, or is that right? Bellas?
It's the same shingles. He just didn't have the.
Oh, I thought he, he put on their composite shingles.
Well, your laminated shingles are composite shingles.
Oh, I thought, okay. All right, so his quote was for four thousand for all of it.
But he didn't have that little section added on there.
He didn't.
When I called him, he said he don't even want to do it.
Okay. So the, the quote that we got from Mr. Simmons of Beauty Roofs, it was forty-seven thirty-six for all of the roof. And that would include, you know, this over-the-new closet little addition and the older roof. But I was trying to call him, and I tried to call him earlier, to see if, hey, can we have you do this section now in the closet, and then four months from now, do the rest of it. So I, I, he's been pretty great so far, but his initial quote was. So I, I, he's been pretty great so far, but his initial quote was, like I said, six seventy-five for, it included the closet addition and the bathroom area, because he would, in order to make it seamless and to make it watertight, according to his standards, which he has to do, he wanted to do the whole, that whole new section, not just the closet add-on, but the bathroom hallway area, because he has to make sure that it's watertight. And to do that, he had to put the flashing under all of it, and, and so all that area would have to be done at that time. So, and.
If we're, if we're true to our budget, we don't have the budget to do an entire roof. So we would be throwing away six or seven hundred dollars that would cover the corner being built out for now, but that would get replaced in four or five months if we decide to go back, and so we'd be overlapping six or seven hundred dollars.
I mean, that's.
Is that right?
That's.
That we've replaced that?
Well, I don't know that a roofer's going to want to come have to patch that one little corner, and that'll drive them nuts. They're probably going to want to just strip it off and redo it.
And it'll cost more labor because of the setup time. I mean, it's not going to cost, it's not going to save six hundred dollars to do that six hundred dollars now. And I mean, I, I like budgets because they're good tools for us, but we need to treat them as tools, in my opinion. Keep it in mind, you know, that we've been doing well, that we have all the money that we do in the bank, and keep it in mind that inflation is a real thing. I always make my decisions with money partially based off of that. So whatever money we have is depreciating, and as our previous lawyers have warned us, it's a liability to us, too, because whatever we have in a bank, we can be sued for that much. I mean, it's true, unfortunately. So bearing in mind those facts and the fact that we're not dried in, you know, maybe we should consider this roof.
So just to point out, our April end statement says forty-nine thousand dollars, but it does not have the one thousand dollars or the thirty-two eighty to the counties in the sheet. So that brings us down with the money we spent tonight, plus any other outstanding debt that's not reported, it's forty-one thousand, six thirty-four. Just so you're making informed decisions. It's not forty-nine, it's forty-one.
So the, so it is May eleventh, but, so the, the checks, you won't see those until next month, yeah, for clarification, yeah? But, you know, we, we sure have a lot better attorney bills right now, so we're not paying five and eight thousand dollars a month in attorney bills, so I'm grateful for that. So, but yeah, we, that TARP is not going to last forever, and I feel like we need to just go ahead and get this done. It has been months and months, it is allotted in the budget, but I do, I think the, the rub there is, okay, do we go ahead and pay the, I guess, the six hundred and seventy-plus materials for the roofing that he was, because he will have to come out again, four or five months, six months later down the road. So it, you know, as a, as a contracted roofer, I mean, I think it's, it would cost us maybe a little bit more, so if you.
I don't think so. I think John could put ice and water shield on it, and it'll be fine until the roof gets replaced. That's what John's comment was earlier, if we, which I have some ice and water shield.
You mean on the, on the black?
On the add-on part.
We're also about to end our dry season.
So you're saying not to roof it?
We're also about to end our dry season.
That's true.
So you're saying not to roof the black?
Well, I mean, I would let the professionals say that, but I think that's what John was saying. If we had ice and water shield, it would get us through till whenever we decided to roof. Granted, that's not going to be two or three years, but it could last six months.
So he could go ahead, you're saying that the closet could be, you could put the black, what do you call that stuff, the black?
Well, it's not, you're not going to use tarp paper. He usually uses synthetic, but you'd go straight down with the ice and water shield, it's a.
So on the wood, on the wood decking, then you just put the ice and water shield, and then we could leave that for how long?
I mean, you'd have to ask John, but it, it has a shelf life that's, I mean, several months.
And then, so then, in five, in four, five, six months, we could then have the whole roof done, is that what you're suggesting?
In the next budget cycle.
Okay, I like it. Any thoughts on that from others?
So what is our total tonight? Because this has twenty-five hundred dollars in it that's already been done, check, right? But that's coming out of that same budget line. So the ninety-eight nineteen and the thirty-seven ninety-seven is what you're.
So if, now the ramp wouldn't be in that necessarily.
Well, if we're talking about moving in, it will be.
Okay, um, three ninety-nine point nine two, let's see. And we, we have been collecting donations for the finish out on the tile for the bathroom, so we, we have received a hundred dollars for that, and.
So Terry, isn't it the ninety-eight nineteen minus twenty-five hundred, and that's your?
We've already got the four nine, so, and then thirty-seven, ninety-seven. So that's a total of ten thousand sixty-one, or ten thousand six hundred seventeen dollars and seventy-one cents. Someone can check me.
So that's the closet plus everything above that hadn't been paid for?
Now, the roof, if we did the, what is that called?
Ice and water.
The ice and water shield?
Ice and water.
Ice and water shield. Let me get my.
No.
We've got a contractor here.
What's already been paid is the twenty-five hundred plus out of six, the four, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, that's done.
So if we did the ten thousand six hundred seventeen dollars worth and do the ice and water shield, how much does that cost?
Yeah, basically.
Is that very?
Nah, I got enough.
Three thousand dollars comes off the thirteen thousand, whatever, what was it?
I got the same number.
Did you get the same number? Okay, thank you. So, so if we did the ice and water shield on the decking, like he is suggesting, I think that's a brilliant idea, actually. And then we could maybe consider the, the roofing later when we have the, the funds to do so in the next fiscal year. Then we could go ahead and do everything we need to possibly move in for, yeah, under eleven thousand dollars.
So here's my only deal. That gives us thirty-one thousand seventeen dollars and three cents. When's our next proposed deposits from, from our vendors?
Well, we should be getting, we're actually getting a deposit on, um, July, and then we're also getting sales and use tax revenue, which will help with offset some of the road costs.
Let's go more with the ones we know.
Yeah, I did get a, yeah.
So franchise, we get those.
Every quarter.
April, and, well, we get it by April, right?
In April, and.
So we should get the other one, June, July?
We'll get the, we'll get the next installment of, in July. And then June will be, in June, end of June, I knew it pretty much, in the end of June, we'll be getting some of the franchise fees. So we'll be getting another twenty grand or so.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's still, I don't know if it's still on the table, but I, before we spend any more money in the bathroom, that's kind of my holdup. I really want to know. We've had two people tell us it won't pass ADA inspection, and it's minuscule, but I don't want to spend a thousand dollars in that bathroom, and it not pass inspection, it has to be ripped out.
Well, I know, talking with, so if we just went ahead and did the, the.
And the other question I had, and this is nothing against you, Tom, I don't think those front steps are going to pass inspection either. I don't, nothing against you, I appreciate the steps, but I don't think the front steps are going to pass inspection. There's no approach to step out to, so, I mean, is that another expense that we're going to hit, get hit with, or we? I mean, they were stated as temporary before, so I, just to be fully transparent, I mean, what is our expectations? Are we going to have to spend another thousand dollars, or is this guy that did such a great job on the ramp and rails, is that something that he could look at and tell us? Because this is a big ask, I mean, it's ten thousand dollars, I get it, we got, we got it budgeted.
But the ramp and rail goes to that door, doesn't it?
I, I understand, but, but you have to have two, or you, you have another exit, and it has to be.
But that one doesn't have to be ADA, but it does have to pass.
It doesn't, but it has to be compliant. You can't step out and go down eight inches immediately. There has to be an approach on that step.
Better than burning alive.
Well, I mean, jump out a window.
So do you know if, do you know if the inspector said anything about, any about Tom?
You do have to have some kind of landing, yeah, on the step.
Tara, it's been over a year, so. I can't remember what I had for dinner last night.
So can we, can we, so we don't belabor too much, but we do have, let's, let's hear from some citizens. Glenn Strauss.
Glenn Strauss, eleven zero seven two, County Road two four five four. I understand, I heard today that the campground church got torn down, demolished, because it was.
That's kind of off-topic, sorry.
Well, it's an example of deferred maintenance not done, all right, an extreme example of deferred maintenance undone. My opinion is fix it, fix it now, and fix it right, so we don't have to worry about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. All right, Kevin Sinkovich.
Kevin Sinkovich, one one zero nine zero, CR twenty-four hundred in regards to this agenda item. So Tara came to me two years ago and said, hey, we want to put the temporary town hall into our place of business. I was happy to do so, and in doing that, we've made, we've paid the utilities, kept the place clean, tried to take care of things, no charge to the town, didn't want to charge anything to the town, it was a donation to the town. I'm honored to be able to help with the town, but it has been two years. It's a moderate disruption to our current business. It is also a potential, I think it's hurting Teresa a little bit. She's in a very small room, it's cram-packed with, with a lot of stuff in there for the town, file cabinets, desks, that sort of thing.
We don't, oh, yeah.
Okay, she, she, she needs some room, some additional room. Also, just, you know, there are some people in the town that don't feel comfortable coming to our place of business, and the town hall's meant to be a place of comfort for everybody in the town. No matter who you are, whether you're this or that or whatever, everyone should feel comfortable, it felt okay to go to their, it's their town hall. And I'm asking that you guys will take that in consideration. I'm, I'm pushing Tara now to, you know, two years is enough, I would like to see the town hall moved off our place of business and into its own location. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's good points.
So, to that point, Secretary Teresa is having to use boxes for file cabinets. We have three file cabinets that have been donated, we just don't have the space to put them. And so it's, it's, you know, it has been two years, we have two years' worth of records, and she's doing great as far as organization, but it's cramped, and we need, we need space, so. Dale Bryant?
Real quick, Terry, you were right at the front porch, I talked to an inspector if you were to build, pull.
Could you get to make a?
Go ahead, come up and state your name and address, please.
Dale Bryant, eleven one thirty-nine, County Road twenty-four sixty-four. Terry, you're, you're correct, if you were to pull the stairs off, build a five-by-five, according to the inspector, with the rails, and then reattach the staircase, that might suffice.
Okay.
Okay, so there's Tom's next project. Sorry, Tom. I'm teasing. Anybody have donated lumber, though? That'd be great. Thank you, Dale. Shelley Smith? Patrick Smith? Joshua's, oh, he's gone, okay. All right, so. Tom put those posts in concrete for the bulletin board, he's, he's on it.
So, so are, are we looking to do, to prove everything, say, the ninety-eight nineteen plus whatever we were talking about a few minutes ago?
Well, phase.
Less, less the twenty-five hundred and less the four ninety-nine?
That's correct.
That's correct, plus the one below that, I believe.
Thirty-seven ninety-seven.
The thirty-seven ninety-seven, yes, sir.
Yeah, then I'd, I'd make the motion that we approve that.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Anderson, seconded by White, to approve the phase one and phase two as written on this proposed budget sheet, less the ones that have already been completed. All those in favor? Woohoo, that passed, five, five and O. Thank you, guys. All right. Okay, moving on, number eleven, discuss and take action on requests for qualifications. The RFQ is presented for a general-use town engineer. So, I was kind of hoping Secretary Janet could pull one out of her hat, because with all her years of experience, she went, she, she actually went to Lake for Mother's Day, which I don't blame her. But then the, the town attorney came up with one, and then Tom also, I think, has found a couple, is that right? A couple of examples?
Quite a few, but most of them, some of them were thirty, forty pages long, which I didn't like. A lot of them were, say, eight, seven, eight pages long, which I kind of liked. One was two pages long, which I really liked, that was one from Quinlan. But it wasn't for the, just the town engineer, it was for a specific project. I called the mayor, it's based on their RFQ for the town engineer, but it's specific to this project. So I liked it because it was short and to the point, and still had all of the qualifications. But it does have to have some things added in to make it more general for a town engineer. Now, having said that, the one that is for this town I've never heard of, Semetron, Semetron? It had kind of everything I think we would need as well, and so there's a lot of options, and a lot of them, but they all have basically the same thing, in that they describe what the duties are of ratings, excuse me, what the, any kind of engineering company would need to propose, as well as a, a rating system. Now, I talked to the mayor of Quinlan, Jackie Goldman, who Tara and I had met at the Quinlan QISD bond meeting a couple of weeks ago, they had a luncheon, and so we talked, and then after Tara left, I talked more with him. And anyway, he said, if you have questions, he can help, he'd be happy to help us, he understands our situation. But, so when I talked to him, he, he basically said, you know, you have to have this, and then you have to go out for bids, and there's a way, and he said you need to narrow it down to about four to five companies, and then put it up to the council to vote on those. And so I said, well, did you have any single individuals come up as an engineer, or were they all council, uh, companies? He said, no, they were all companies that had a broad range of services. Now, I looked in the internet, and, and there are quite a few companies that provide the whole range of services, and I don't know, they're probably more expensive than an individual, but they're more all-encompassing than what we'd ever want. Now, Jackie Goldman didn't ask me what do we needed, what we need right now, and I said, well, as far as I could see, our most urgent need had to do with right-of-ways and engineering reviews of that. Now, who knows down the road what we're going to be faced with for an engineer? The companies tend to cover a lot of different things, individual engineer may or may not. So, the, the point that I have here is these, we have to turn out a RFQ, I believe, and, and there is a way to do it, and then it has to have certain features, which are in this one, Semetron, theirs, and others, they're all very similar. And when I asked Jackie Goldman about how they did it, and he says, oh, we just copied from another company, another city. He said, we didn't write this, and, and that's kind of what Mr. Berman has said we needed to do. Just look at other cities, find what they have, find one you like, and then copy it. So the one that I thought was probably reasonable was the Semetron, the one I liked best, but it has some editing that would have to be done, is the one for Quinlan. The advantage of the one for Quinlan is Jackie, they do have one, by the way, the general one, for all of the city engineer, and Jackie Goldman said if we had a problem, we could come down, he'd sit with us and go through it or help us. So that's the one advantage of that, is being able to go talk to Jackie Goldman and find out things that they went through that, where he may be able to help us, even though, and there's no pride of ownership in his, in the one that they use, he said they copied it from another company anyway, I mean, another town anyway.
So on this one from Quinlan, I, I kind of do like the fact that it does provide factors and objective way to score it. I think that's kind of an intriguing, I haven't seen that on the other RFQs, and that could be beneficial, because then you're. Not like that?
Yeah, they have one of them.
Page six.
And I had the impression, just looking at them, that you have to have that, in other words, to be fair to the bidders.
But it actually gives a place for the score, which is what I mean, like.
Somebody can't come back and say.
You actually write it on, on the sheet itself, so then you have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, Jackie said they brought them in, interviewed the four or five, and then took a vote. took a vote.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and we can, I, I'm with Tom, the Semetron's pretty clean, and we could always, if we liked the little scoring section, we could always cut that in.
Mm-hmm. And then, did anyone get the one that Mr. Berman sent?
Oh, no, I haven't-
I know it came late, and then, I wasn't sure with-
I didn't get these.
Janet, you didn't?
I didn't either.
I apologize. I'm not sure with her schedule now, I'm not sure.
You did Jonathan?
Okay.
But no, I didn't get these, I didn't get anything from Mr. Berman, and I checked my mail. You know, just before I came?
Well, so, I feel like we could come, you know, maybe combine the best of all three, or look at that.
I think, I think that's probably what we would do.
Can we put them on, can we put them on the forum, maybe, and then, hash it, you know, hash it out over there and negotiate what we, things we like, and, so, because I don't think we're going to solve this tonight, it's pretty-
I haven't read it.
The interesting thing about Semetron is it's established in eighteen fifty. They're a new town compared to Polatry. Established in eighteen forty-five.
Eighteen, oh, established eighteen fifty.
Yeah.
So, then, that'll give you a chance, since you didn't get the one from Mr. Berman, apparently, um, um-
So, I, I guess the main point is there's options, and we have, as examples we can go through, we don't need to have Mr. Berman spend a lot of time writing it up, I mean, he's got, got one, he probably copied it from somebody else, so, we can go through-
He was pretty quick with it.
Put it together-
Yeah.
And then, bring it back to the council to approve, and then, go out for RFQs.
Yep.
Public comment.
We have one, Glenn Strauss? You want to pass? Okay. All right. So, do you all want to just kind of have time to digest all these, and get the one from Berman, and then, we'll bring it back into the forum, maybe, and kind of negoti- you know, see what we like and don't like, and discuss it on there? Okay? So, we'll, okay, if we table this, until next time. On number twelve, discuss posting the agenda for the June twentieth meeting early on June the tenth. This is for my husband, I'd be able to go on a much-needed vacation for a few days, but I wanted to go ahead and, um-
No. I can't go, you can't go.
It's been two years. So, anyway, I just wanted to make that known, so that if we did that, I'll try and post everything early on June tenth, but then, that would push everything back, and I just didn't want it to be a surprise to anybody that we would need everything by June the second.
And Tara, I did mention, I want to be gone the last two weeks of August, which is, I would prefer be shoved up to the, starting the fifteenth of August, which is a Tuesday. So, I would prefer to have our meeting in August, the week before.
Okay, that's one month at a time here, Tom. You're going to confuse us. But, no, that's, so, yeah, no, I noted, but, yeah.
But, I mean, Terry, more than anybody, as much as anybody needs a schedule.
Are we moving the meeting date, or the agenda date?